Welcome for those who are joining, we're gonna be starting at 6. If you need Spanish interpretation, the instructions are on the screen. Libby, could you explain the how to dial in for Spanish interpretation?
Thank you. Buenas tardes, bienvenidos. Si desean escuchar este seminario en español, por favor, marquen en sus teléfonos el número 646 558 8656 y entren en el código de ID 522 498 0218 signo numeral para obtener esta reunión en español. Llamar al 646 558 8656 522 498 0218 signo numeral como ID. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you, Libby. And you and go ahead for Mandarin.
Hi,大家好. 今天会有中文普通话的翻译服务. 如果大家需要普通话的翻译，请拨打646 558 8656. 重复一遍，646 558 8656. 那个meeting ID就是那个会议号码，就是井497 692 7129. 再重复一遍，497 692 7129. 然后再按井字两次，你就可以听到普通话的翻译了。谢谢。Thank you.
Thank you. And for anyone who just joined, we'll be starting at 6 o'clock. Hello, for anyone who just joined, we're going to get started at 6 o'clock. Libby, could you again explain the dial-in instructions for Spanish?
Thank you. Yes. Buenas noches, bienvenidos. Si desean escuchar la reunión en español, por favor, llamar al número 646 558 8656 y entren en el código de reunión 522 498 0218 signo numeral. Nuevamente, para escuchar la reunión en español, por favor, llamar al 646 558 8656 y entren el código 522 498 0218 signo numeral. Y esta información aparece en la pantalla también. Gracias. Thank you.
大家好，今天会有普通话的翻译。如果大家需要普通话的话，请拨打646 558 8656. 电话号码是646 558 8656. 那个会议号码就是497 692 7129. 497 692 7129. 再按井字两次，谢谢.
Thank you. Hello, to anyone who just joined, we'll be starting in a few minutes. Okay, hello everyone, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Thank you so much for joining tonight's town hall. My name is Elliot Hutterly. I'm with Harlem River Preservation. We are the nonprofit-led team selected by NYCHA to upgrade and manage Harlem River Houses and the tower, 2850. I want to just take a moment to explain how to dial in to hear this meeting in Spanish and in Mandarin. Libby, if you could go ahead and explain how to dial in in Spanish.
Hola, buenas tardes, bienvenidos a todos. Gracias por estar aquí para escuchar esta reunión en español. Por favor, marcar el 646 558 8656 y entrar el código de reunión 522 498 0218 signo numeral. De nuevo, para escuchar la reunión en español, por favor, llamar en sus teléfonos al 646 558 8656 y entrar el código 522 498 0218 signo numeral. Gracias. Thank you, Elliot.
大家好，今天 大家好，今天会有中文普通话的翻译。如果大家需要中文普通话的翻译的话，就请拨打646 558 8656. 646 558 8656. 然后再打那个会议编号，就是497 692 7129. 497 692 7129.
Thank you, Libby and you and. And that information is on the bottom of every slide. So at any point during the presentation, if you would like to dial in to hear the meeting audio in Spanish or Mandarin, you can do so. And a copy of these slides were delivered to all of all households. So you can use the printed copy to follow along if you're listening in on the phone. If for some reason you did not receive a printed copy, you can pick one up tomorrow from the management office. And this webinar is also being recorded and will be available on the website. So again, just to reiterate, we dropped off a printed copy of this presentation. If you're listening to the audio over your phone, you can follow along. And the video recording will be published on the website, which is www.harlemriver.org. Everyone will be muted during the presentation. We will have a Q and A session at the end of the presentation, which we expect to be around 6:45. At that time, to ask a question, you can either type your question into the Zoom Q and A. In order to find the Zoom Q and A, move your cursor or tap your phone screen to see the Zoom toolbar appear. You can then click the Q and A and then type your question into the Q and A chat. You can also raise your hand by either tapping the screen of your phone or moving your cursor to reveal the Zoom toolbar and select participants and then raise hand. And the meeting host will then call on you and ask you to unmute to answer, to ask your question. Our agenda for tonight's meeting, we'll start with construction progress and updates. We'll then move on to property management updates, security updates, updates about local hiring, updates on social services. And finally, we'll conclude with questions and discussion. And with that, I will turn it over to John from L and M Builders to talk about construction progress and updates.
Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone is doing well tonight. My name is John Capone. I'm working with the L and M team here. We are responsible for the renovations and the upgrades that are going on with the property. We want to share some of that information with you tonight. Of course, if you would like to ask any questions at the Q and A session, my colleagues and I will be here and we can answer them. Let's start with obvious renovations. What's going on in your apartment, right? In the event that you've seen renovated apartment, I think the you could see that the apartments are getting new kitchens, they're getting updated bathrooms, new flooring, new light fixtures, new walls, new paint on the walls, excuse me, and all new doors. What you don't see, or you may not realize, is that all the lead-based paint in the apartment is being removed, it's being abated. That has been an ongoing thing and we are not taking any chances. So we're removing all that lead-based paint and giving you fresh new walls either by skimcoating them, plastering them, or putting up sheet rock, fresh sheet rock. Your kitchens are filled with new cabinets. You have state-of-the-art new appliances, bathroom fixtures are all new. Your closet spaces have been redone. So wherever you got new windows throughout the complex, although we've only been able to install them in the tower up to now. The expected arrival for the windows for Harlem River 1 to 7 is sometime the end of May, early June. And we'll keep you informed as to how that's going. If anybody has any questions about what's going on in your apartment, like I said, please reach out to us during the Q and A. Let's see, replaced 100% of the lighting in all the common areas. I'm sure everybody's noticed that we've installed all new state-of-the-art LED lighting throughout common area hallways, stair halls. You may notice that the lights seem to get brighter sometimes. That's because they're bi-level. They automatically dim to lower their energy consumption and whatnot when the sensor doesn't realizes that nobody's around. And they'll kick on to full power when you are, when the sensor sees you and full light is called for. We added New York City rated exit signs throughout the tower and throughout all the low-rise buildings. So now all exits are appropriately marked with exit sign, with lit exit signs, both at the building entrances and the bulkhead roof. Each stair floor, each stair hall, excuse me, in the tower, there are all new exit lights installed. One of the things that's interesting to note too, that the common area lights are all emergency lights. In the event of a power outage, they all have emergency backup batteries. So the lights will stay on for a given period of time to either weather the storm, so be it to get you through the blackout, or at least let you get to somewhere safely. So we're very happy that we're providing, we're adding safety as part of this renovation. As I mentioned, the windows in the tower are almost completely new. We, the cellar, the basement cellar level, we have some windows to do and maybe an oddball one here or there, but for the most part, we're 99% through with installing new windows throughout the 2850 HR2. Again, like I said earlier, we're expecting the windows for the low-rises to show up sometime around the end of this month, early June. The roofs have been a big challenge. We have installed all new roofs on buildings 1 to 7, insulated roofs to help bridge the gap with reducing our reliance on emission, on carbon and fossil fuels. The tower roof will be done late winter, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. It depends on how the new facade schedule comes along. But so all the buildings will by early next year have brand-new roofs. And we're excited about that. In addition to the roofs, the bulkhead doors have all been replaced. This is a great, great addition as there was some issues with doors flying open in storms and water penetrating the buildings and whatnot. So we have all new doors at the top of the staircases in the low-rise buildings and the two bulkhead doors will eventually be replaced on the roof of the tower. As part of the renovation, there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes that you may not be aware of. One of those, one aspect of that work is improving the water infrastructure of the distribution of fresh cold water and naturally domestic hot water. New riser valves have been installed throughout the site in pretty much everywhere except on a couple of the lines in the tower, which will be completed in the coming months. In addition, we're installing localized new domestic hot water plants, which will provide increased in energy efficiency and also speed hot water to your location at any time. So we're very, very excited about that and we hope that everybody is equally excited. As you could see, there are these rigs, these hanging scaffolds off the sides of the buildings. I know management's been pestering people about getting your air conditioners out of the way and covering your air conditioning and keeping your windows closed. And we apologize for all those inconveniences, but they are necessary when we're, you know, tackling scope the way we're doing here. What we're doing is we're going around the entire facade of every building structure on the property. And we're repointing brick, we're replacing brick, we're caulking windows, we're doing everything we can to weatherproof the exterior facade of the entire facility, basically every building on the site. So we've made our way almost nearly through the tower. We're through buildings 6, 7, 1, 2, and 3. And we're currently working on buildings 4 and 5 and we're hoping to have that finished up sometime early this summer. One big addition that everybody I'm sure will be happy to hear about and that we're very excited about is the installation of state-of-the-art security cameras inside and outside all the buildings on the site. Security cameras will be, is several of them, a couple of hundred of them being installed throughout the site. There'll be a central station where security will be able to monitor the ins and outs of the the property. And we're very excited. Those will start to be installed sometime this month, commencing with building 3. As you see cameras going up, they will be live. So once you see a camera in a location, it's recording. And they will go, they will actually be installed and start working in stages. So they won't all be installed in one day, obviously, but as you see them go up, they certainly will be live, they will be operational, they will be recording. And we're very excited about this because it increases our awareness of what's going on. And of course, it increases security for all of our residents and staff on the site. At the tower, we are very excited that we got one elevator completely modernized, updated, inspected, and back in service. And currently, we are doing the same with the second elevator. I'm not sure if anybody, I'm not sure how many people have seen the new elevator. Bear in mind, there is an awful lot of padding on the walls and the ceiling and the floor right now because we want to protect the interior surfaces of the car while construction is going on. But with the completion of construction on the site, all that padding obviously will be removed and you'll see modern cab, emergency features like an emergency call button. The fire department has access keys to speed. Anybody who's trapped or whatnot in the elevator. There are new motors, new cables, new controllers, new call buttons. Just about everything in the elevators is new. We're excited about that. In addition, in the tower, I'll get to it in more detail, but there will be a laundry room being installed in the cellar. And you will be able to access the cellar, the basement, excuse me, you will be able to access the basement to do your laundry via the elevator. If anybody's been over to building 6 and building 7, we, you could see, we've been doing an awful lot of work on the grounds. This includes new walking paths, resetting all the historic cobblestones, installing parks, installing new plantings will be starting June 1st. We've installed an irrigation system, we've installed new sidewalks, ADA accessible ramps at the playgrounds. We're very excited and we'll be going through that in more detail a little bit later in this presentation. I think Elliot's gonna walk us through some of the exciting designs we have for the park areas for the kids and for adults too, just to upgrade things and give the place a good feeling. The existing city sidewalks, we started on Adam Clayton Powell, in case anybody noticed. And we will be starting again probably sometime in June. And the city sidewalks surrounding all of HR1 and HR2. So all around buildings 1 to 5, across the street in front of buildings 6 and 7. And on, at 2850, all the sidewalks that are adjacent to the property are being replaced. So that's great for a number of reasons. We don't want, as you know, the cobblestones and whatnot that are part of the sidewalk features here have sunken over the years and settled and whatnot. And with the work, we're modernizing everything, giving everything, all the safety features that we can add and very, very, very excited about this. We are moving forward. We started apartment renovations in 2850, the tower on the first floor, a couple of weeks ago. And that will be an ongoing process over probably the course of about 12 months. But by the fall of 2024, we are expecting to be completely done, hoping, with all the apartment renovations, both at HR2 and at HR1, buildings 1 to 7. As part of these renovations, all the building entrances are getting new front doors, new locks, new intercoms, new key fob access. All that will work in conjunction with the new security cameras, all in an effort to provide just great features to you as residents, to management, and to visitors even. If you get the app on your phone, you'll be able to see who's calling, believe it or not. And somebody buzzes you from the intercom system, you could, you could see who it is. So we're very excited about some of the efficiencies we're building into the the buildings and the added security features and everything else that's going on. Although I have not seen all three of them, I am, I was told that there were three historic sculptures here. Two, I believe, at least two have been sent out, one was sent out to be refurbished and the other two have been covered to protect them. And they'll be worked on, they're gonna be cleaned up, polished as part of the site work. And we are gonna restore them to their original splendor, complete even with new lighting to accentuate them. So we're very, very excited that we're adding, again, in conjunction with the landmark status of the building here, we are, we're, as we're modernizing it, we're not forgetting that it is the original NYCHA housing complex in New York City. So we want it to be unique and special. Common area spaces, the resident community room, which will be completed by the end of 2003, will be located at 20, you know, on 150th, on the back of 2850, I apologize. If anybody's noticed, we have a social, we have a temporarily placed social services. If anybody's noticed, we have a social, we have a temporarily placed social services. One hundred and fifty first street, that office will be moved to the rear area of the tower. And that area will be completely renovated. New office space, new heating, new cooling, making it a very comfortable environment, a private environment for you to go and speak with people who are here to service and help you, you know, with, with all your needs. So we're very excited about that. In addition, the TA will be getting a new space currently where the social services office is located temporarily. So we're very excited about that. And again, that space will have everything from an ADA accessible ramp on the interior to new storefront, new heating, new cooling, soup to nuts. So we're very excited and I'm sure Mrs. Grant is very excited too. In the basements of three of the buildings, we will be re-installing laundry rooms. This is of course a service for our tenants. The laundry rooms will have a common entrance in building five and building two. And again, in the tower, it's located in the cellar, in the basement. So you'll be able to access it via the refurbished elevators. As, as you all know, as we're trying to save the environment and get green, we are encouraging everyone to recycle and we will be installing recycling rooms in the basement. Most of the stair halls. I don't wanna say everyone because some of the recycling rooms will service two stair halls. But pretty much you could walk down to the bottom of the building, walk into the hallway and there'll be a recycling room there to put your cans and your bottles and your paper and your, or your recyclables. So we're excited about that because we're trying to get away from the waste building up outside and being unsightly and attracting pests and things like that. So we've installed all new garbage compactors, we've installed new trash chutes in all of the stair halls. Management is working very diligently to get the garbage out of the building, off the sidewalks, off the property and in to where it belongs. So with your cooperation, we're sure all that's gonna work out when all this work is done. Thank you Elliot, if, for anybody, I'm sure most people on the site have seen, but this is two examples of a renovated kitchen and a renovated bathroom. As you could see, all the fixtures are new, flooring is new, and the bathroom tub, new tile, new vanity. New medicine cabinet, new lighting, everything's very, very energy efficient as well. So keep that in the back of your minds that we're doing this with the, with a sign towards taking care of planet earth. That's what they looked like after we tore the old ones out. But I hope everybody is happy with the work that we've been doing. If anybody has any comments or wants to improve on it, I am always here, I can generally hear every single day. I'm two eleven D, you can always come and knock on the door and, and share any of your thoughts with me, I'd be happy to speak with you. But this, this design and this plan has been ongoing for some time now. We have a lot of confidence and management and our, the Harlem River Preservation Team is complete here. There's a lot of us working very hard together. And again, we have a common goal and that's to upgrade the property and make everybody's life here more comfortable and improve the quality of living, so that's where we're going. On the left there is an example of the new windows that'll be installed in the low rises. On the right is a picture of the tower with some of the facade work going on. The tower will be clad in ephesus, which is an insulation type exterior. And the chimney you could see has been colored to, the chimney doesn't get the ephesus, but the chimney was painted to match the ephesus. As I stated earlier, all eight buildings, Harlem River one to seven and the tower included, will be getting brand new roofs, buildings one to seven are nearly, nearly, nearly complete. The tower will be completed after all the facade work is done. But that goes, that's just an example of what's involved in, in putting a new roof in. They scraped it right down to the original concrete. Put a vapor barrier on top of it, torch down and then insulation and a new sealed roof. That's, and these pictures are examples in the back of what's going on behind building six and seven with our site work improvements. You could see the picture on your left is the new sidewalk that we installed. The cobblestones, the star cobblestones have all been reset, so they're, they're level, they're safer to walk on. This area in the middle, the middle photo is the, the radius of the stairs adjacent to the park. We think they came out fantastic, I happen to think they came out fantastic. We're very excited about everything that's going on. And in the picture to the right, you could see that we installed, we're working on the playground area in the back of building seven. And in order to make it accessible to people who may have a problem with stairs, we put in a ramp. Of course, the ramp will get a railing and it'll be easier access. Yeah, the guy who really knows about the playgrounds and what's, whatnot that we're planning on installing for you is Elliot. So again, I'm available for questions if anybody would like to speak to me further, Q and A. And like I said, otherwise, any day, I'm usually, I usually can be found on site. So I hope you take me up on it, feel free to ask, thanks.
Thank you so much, John. So we wanted to show the playgrounds that will be installed. There are four playgrounds across the development that will be put in. So first, what you see on your screen right now is to the left, the preparation of the area where the playground will go. This is behind buildings, what we call six and seven, which are the buildings across Adam Clayton Powell Boulevard. And on the right is a rendering of that playground to be installed. The design of the playgrounds were developed in very close conjunction with the Tenant Association Executive Board. Based on their input, this was the, the design of the playground that was approved. This is the playground that will go in front of the tower twenty eight fifty. And these two flower-like features on the right are, are interactive water features, which I think you're able to see the water coming out from the butterfly-like object, so we're really excited to be bringing that. Next is, this is the design for the new playground that will be installed in the, one of the two sunken areas in the interior courtyard at Harlem River Houses. All of the playgrounds are designed for a range of ages, from toddlers up to teenage years. And then finally, again, based on input from the Tenant Association Executive Board, the other sunken area in the interior courtyard will be kept as open space for play events and activities, but we'll have some painted games on the ground for some interactive games for children. And with that, I'll actually turn it back over to John to talk about which apartments are next up for renovation.
Thank you Elliot. As you know, we've been, for the most part, with the exception of the tower, which, like I said earlier, we started the first floor and will be continuing with on a floor by floor basis. These buildings one to seven, we've been doing a stair hall at a time. This is so to facilitate the lead paint abatement. And just as you could see, the construction is always a little messy, so it's best to, we understand it's an inconvenience, but we're asking for six weeks. They, Sav moves you out, construction gets in there, does what they have to do. And then you get, when you go back, you have a brand new renovated unit. We are currently in the process of completing two ten K, we're excited, twenty six forty five. Adam Clayton Powell Boulevard across the street, we are doing lead paint abatement in there. Two ten X, we recently relocated everybody, so that renovation will be underway. Two twenty nine is next on our list, the, the second floor of the tower. Then we've got, going to be doing two twenty one, two eleven D, fifty two McCombs, two twenty West, one fifty second, and then the third floor. These renovations are in no real particular order. From, from a planning and a management perspective, you have to understand that when we're relocating you, we're trying to make it as painless as possible. So what's really guiding or what's really directing the renovation schedule is the ability to relocate you for the six weeks and then get you back into your permanent apartment. So there's, there's no preference or anything given to, you know, whether you're in building one or building five. We are, we're doing our best based on the availability of vacant units. And both at the tower and at buildings one to seven.
Thank you, John. And I just wanted to note that if you don't see your building address on this list, we, we still have it on our schedule, we're just showing the buildings that are up next for the next few months. And of course, you will receive notice at least sixty days in advance of when your building is going to be renovated. That information will also go out to all residents about the upcoming next apartment renovations in the newsletter, which we will try to get out to you on a regular basis to inform you about the construction updates and what else is happening at the property. And with that, just a few notes on the temporary relocation process, I wanna turn it over to Jackie Robinson.
Thank you Elliot. Of course, guys are wanting to know what to expect for the temporary relocation. The apartment renovation work includes the removal of all lead base, as John stated. And to keep each household safe from the lead dust and debris, we are, or each resident will have to relocate to another apartment at the Harlem River while construction work occurs. Our temporary relocation team will notify you around sixty days prior to your move, meaning you will receive a sixty day notice to sit and meet with one of the resident engagement coordinators. And we will schedule a time for you to come in to meet with us in person. No later than thirty days before your move, the staff will do a walkthrough of your unit to take inventory and to make sure that residents are prepared and ready to relocate. Also, you can request moving boxes at any time, boxes will be available, someone from the SAP team. If you reach out, we will deliver those boxes to you, to your household to get you ready for your move. Also, requesting boxes earlier and getting residents prepared earlier will make the process just as smooth. You will be temporarily relocated for approximately six weeks to another unit on the property while your apartment renovations is going on. That will be coordinated with the relocation coordinators, the resident engagement coordinators. Professional movers will move all your belongings at no cost to the resident to your temporary apartment and then back to your original apartment. If you need assistance with packing, we provide assistance, I mean, we'll provide that assistance as well. Also, you can call the temporary relocation team to ask any questions, the numbers there, six four six four six one three zero zero seven, the relocation coordinator that's on the site, you can speak with either Shil in my bed or Anita Alba.
Thank you so much Jackie. And now we'll actually go back to John again. Thank you, John, to talk about the healing and cooling upgrades that are happening at the property.
Thanks Elliot. Some of you have seen, we're, and the, I think Elliot included some photographs of them. Both the tower twenty eight fifty and the buildings HR, H one to seven getting all new, all electric heating and cooling. This is very, very, very good news for residents, for the earth, for everything. We're getting away from the burning of fossil fuels and we are electrifying things. Apartments that have been renovated post-January of two thousand twenty three have the new heating and cooling units roughed in. And when I say roughed in, what I mean is the unit, the ductwork and the distribution network inside your apartment is installed. Units that were renovated prior to January two thousand twenty three, that some preliminary work was done. But there is more work to be done, builders and management and Sav. Everybody in the Harlem Reserve Preservation Team is working diligently right now to put together a schedule for that comeback work. And we will share more of that with you in the very, very near future. I think we're talking about starting that sometime in early June. We'll give everybody at least thirty days notice, of course. And it'll involve men coming into the apartment, men and women, excuse me, coming into the apartment and doing some work. We'll have cleaning crews, we'll have movers there for any furniture needs to be moved. Bed needs to be relocated. We'll have a place for you to go and spend the day if you don't wanna be in the apartment when the work is going on. So we're, we're really trying to facilitate, trying to do everything in our power to facilitate this and make this process as easy as possible. The other half of that is the work that you don't see going on is sometime in July, I would think. A big crane will be here and we'll start to hoist all new modern condensers that'll be installed on the rooftops. Those are the units that really will be the, the nuts and bolts, so to speak, of the new heating and cooling system. They'll work with the system with the unit that we installed in your apartment. And combined will provide conditioned air throughout the, the apartment. Will decrease the amount of humidity in the bathroom and ultimately throughout the apartment. So this has the added benefit of being, establishing a healthier environment by lessening the chance of mold and things like that. So we are very, very, very excited about this new heating and cooling system. As we get more, as we get more information from vendors and whatnot as far as the shipping dates of equipment and whatnot, we'll keep everybody apprised. But for the renovations that have not started yet, the one half of the unit is being done during the renovation. When the other half gets here, we'll complete the installation and we'll commission the system. In other words, get it started, get it balanced and get it working for you. Thanks. Thank you Elliot. So in the low rise buildings, as you could see, the, where that arrow is, you'll have, you'll have some soffits and a vent like that, and you'll have your heating and cooling to those vents. In the tower, it's the same theory, it's electric heating and cooling, it's just a different delivery system. It's a local standalone unit that's being installed underneath the windows. And those will take the place of your existing radiators. And those units will provide both heating and cool. Thanks.
And John, if you just wanna explain the, why the difference between And John, if you um just want to explain the, why the difference between the two systems?
Oh, I apologize, thanks, Elliot. Um, the buildings H R H one through H R H seven are landmarked. Uh, and, and in layman's terms, that means basically the building is old, it's historic, and it's, it's age is what gives the building character, and that means um as um a renovator or a builder, or you have, you are very restricted as to what aesthetic changes you can make to the building. So in order to install a you, you know, cooling and heating systems, you need exchange of air. Um, the way we get the air exchange is with the condenser units up on the roof and the blower units in your apartment. Um, at the tower, we're installing, we're able to install a vent in the wall of the, which is the facade of the building. And that facilitates the, the exchange of air, hot, hot or used air out, fresh air intake. So it's, it's again, the both systems are compatible, both systems do the same thing. It's just two ways of, two different ways of doing it. Uh, one where we were able to take advantage of the facade of the building or modifying the facade of the building, one where we were not.
Great, thank you so much, John. Moving on, we're going to hear some updates from our property management team. I will pass it over to Priscilla.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, just some friendly reminders on how to contact the, the office and the various teams. So to reach the CNC property management team and other teams for any questions or concerns, the one and only telephone number to utilize would be six four six four six one three zero zero seven during business hours of Monday through Friday, eight thirty A M to five thirty P M. You would press one for maintenance requests, press two for leasing questions or rent payments or billing concerns. Press three to reach the uh sav team temporary moves questions. Press four for the social services team, press five for the security team. Or you can also press zero if you have any other requests or just any questions that are not sure who to contact. You just press zero and the person who uh answers that, that line can help facilitate. And you can also utilize the general email line of harlemriver@ccmanagers.com. Our office address is two thirty-one West one hundred and fifty-first Street. Office walk-in hours are nine A M to three thirty P M, Monday through Friday. So CNC is responsible for all maintenance and repairs at Harlem River Houses and also the Tower twenty-eight fifty. Maintenance requests including extermination, uh you would visit the property management office during business hours. You can also contact by phone, email, on person. You utilizing the information that I stated on the previous slide. For emergency maintenance uh services such as lack of heat, hot water, flooding conditions, uh God forbid, there's a fire, things of that nature. Non-business hours, you would utilize the same telephone number, six four six four six one three zero zero seven. That telephone number is automatically routed to a live operator for after hour, for an after-hours uh call center. Now, you would, going forward, what we are now going to be doing is issuing you a work order number. Um, you can contact the maintenance line and the person, our maintenance coordinator, will give you that work order number, which you can now reference. And um the maintenance office will follow up the status of your request. Annual recertifications is what our compliance department is now uh assisting the develop, uh every resident with. And so you will be receiving notices regarding annual income recertification, and this is necessary in order to continue receiving section eight subsidy. So if you have received a voicemail from the management office about recertification or just any, any other matter, please, please respond. If you're unsure about the status of your recertification, please visit the office, schedule an appointment, and our compliance team will help you navigate. If you're unsure how to recertify or if your recertification is even um complete or if you, if you received a notice and you feel like you have recertified and, and you've received a notice in error, please still respond to that notice so that our compliance specialist can assist you with ensuring that, that your recertification is on record. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Priscilla. We'll now move on to hearing some updates about security at the development, and I will pass it over to Adam.
Hello, everyone. My name is Adam Crum. I'm the Vice President of Security for CNC Apartment Management. As you guys all know, the Nathan Gonzalez is the Security Director on site. So presently, right now, tour command is control the site every, from eight A M to one A M. Uh, we have con, we have contracted security guards on site from twelve to eight A M. A security guard is stationed in the tower, building twenty-eight fifty, and other security checks all the vacancies in the buildings. That's the buildings that are under construction when they're vacant. So the contractor's security are posted and assigned to watch those buildings specifically. Please note that scooters and motorcycles are illegally left on the property, we'll be told. We just placed a bunch of signs around the property to let everyone know that you can't leave your scooters and your bikes just outside like that in front. Uh, for those using the parking area behind building two fifty, always remember to secure the chain behind you. That's been a problem. People leave, they drop the chain down. Illegal cars come aside and they park their cars there. So please, please, please lock the chain behind you when you leave and when you enter. You can reach our security staff twenty-four, twenty-four seven by calling the six four six numbers. You press option five with any security questions or concern. In case of emergencies, you can also contact the after hour, and you go off to remain anonymous.
Thank you so much, Adam. For updates on hiring, I will turn it over to Will.
There you go. Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Will Townsend. I'm Assistant General Manager here at Harlem River. And uh this topic is very exciting for me because we're hiring the community to help build the community. So that's always been a big thing for me. Uh, we have, to date, we have uh hired eighteen residents of Harlem River. The positions that have been uh hired have been general laborers, roof and laborers, electrical laborers, and missionary laborers. Last year, two thousand twenty-two, we hired free OSHA training classes and fourteen residents attended the class. The job highlights that we have are prevailing wages, uh entry-level positions, full-time, temporary, and also the ability to work with, just kind of walking to the job, walking out your homes, going right to work. Can't get no better than that, huh? So uh also moving forward, uh what jobs are currently being hired at Harlem River at this moment? And how can residents apply? Well, right now, we're currently hiring for painting and HVAC system, HVAC meaning uh heating, ventilation, air conditioning trades. Hiring requirements must have a valid OSHA forty certificate, certification, uh proof of work authorization in the U S and a valid I D. Driver's license, uh it's definitely a must. Um, must be a NICA resident. This is very, very important because many uh applications or resumes I received, they weren't uh NICA residents. So this is definitely a very, very important, okay? Must be on a lease. How to apply? Update your resume, contact NICA's Office of, of Residence Economic Empowerment and Stabilitability. Uh, the acronym will be E R E E S at seven one eight two eight nine eighty-one hundred. Or reach out to our social service team. Uh, Sarah Cruz will be there at Harlem River for the support. Make sure your resume is included, you're in your contact information, because many times we receive uh resumes that don't have the telephone number. So make sure you put that there. Drop your resume off at the management office. If you don't know the address, that's uh two thirty-one West one hundred and fifty-first Street, or email it to harlemriver@ccmanagers.com.
Great, thank you so much, Will. And next, we'll hear some updates on social services from Jean.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. So um I'm going to talk about social services at Harlem River. My name is Jean Tate. I'm Director of Social Services, and Sarah Cruz is the Social Services Supervisor. We're excited to offer onsite social services in Harlem River. And our social workers are here to assist you with the following and more. Managing back rent arrears and applying for one-shot deals, childcare voucher application. Applying for benefits, public benefits, which is Medicaid, Medicare, accessorized, Social Security, SNAP. Also job applications and resume building, as well as coping with stress and anxiety and accessing mental health services. Speak with a social worker, it's best to make an appointment. Um, and our off, uh, I'm sorry, make an appointment by calling six four six seven nine nine two three six seven. And our office is located at two oh seven West one fifty-first Street. And please stay tuned for upcoming events, and Sarah is going to talk a little bit about that.
Hi, everyone. Sarah here. Uh, Harlem River Social Services Department is always planning event for our residents for you to exercise your mind, body, and spirit. We activities that include everything from physical fitness, from social events, including bingo and other fun game. And you can see on the photos, I don't know, we are showing the photos right now of past events. You can see that we have done the Chinese New Year celebration, when we had a wonderful afternoon with fun games and snap. And as well, if you can see on the photos, you will see the Valentine's Day that we celebrated with a pain and sip. As always, we are open for new ideas for our event, so stay tuned for more events coming up. Thank you.
Amazing. Thank you so much, Sarah and Jean. And that brings us to our questions and discussion. Um, so uh first of all, I, I just want to highlight that a number of questions have already been submitted in the chat. The, I believe all of those have been answered, um and you should be able to see both those questions and answers in the Q and A box. Um, but if you would like to ask a question at this time, um the instructions are there on the screen. You can either type your question into the Q and A chat and we will answer it. Or you can also now raise your hand on Zoom, see a few folks have their hand raised. Um, the way to do that is to move your cursor or tap your screen so that the Zoom toolbar comes up. You then click Participants and then click Raise Hand. If you are calling into the meeting on a telephone, you should dial star nine to raise your hand. And I'm going to turn it over to Sam to facilitate our question and answer session.
Thank you so much, Elliot. My name is Sam Bernbaum. I am a Senior Project Manager working on the Harlem River Preservation Team. It's really great to be here, uh seeing some familiar names, um and I'm just really, really excited to be getting some of this information out to you. Um, so I'm going to start um with a question we actually received in the chat, just because I think it's um generally useful information for everyone to know. The question was asked about the income recertification process and what is different between incomes, recertifying your income and signing your lease and whether those two things have the same date, have the same deadlines, have the same impact. To answer this question, I, I'd actually like to turn it over to Robert Tessero, um, our rep, a representative from NICA who's with us this evening. So, Robert, um, do you mind unmuting and talking about the income recertification process? Um, and again, the dates, uh the deadlines, how it differs from leasing, the relationship with section eight?
Sure, thank you, Sam, and, and good evening, everyone. Thank you for inviting me. Uh, my name is Robert Tessero. I'm a director here at NICA Section Eight. And again, congratulations, uh it's hard to believe it's already a year, right? Since you guys have closed on the pact and hopefully enjoying all your renovations. Um, so basically, the recertification process, just like in public housing, right? It's required by HUD. And uh one thing that we do in Section Eight here in leased housing, NICA, is that uh we have a robust technology system that allows our household members to basically certify online. Okay, so that's the NICA self-service portal. Um, now, keep in mind that it is an annual requirement, and you are required to report all income for your household members. Okay, whether that be um social security, SSI, employment income, uh assets, that also be reported, just like it was in public housing. Okay, and you may have a new um anniversary date uh than in public housing, because basically in public housing, they may have done your recertification by stair hall or building. Uh, for us, a little bit different, right? So uh the recertifications are kind of um staggered. And depending upon uh how it's set up, your due date is pretty much your anniversary date going forward, okay? So if you're required to certify in the month of July, right, let's say July two thousand twenty-three, uh you can expect to always have that date uh for your recertification, which may not always coincide with your lease start date, right? So those two are a little bit different, uh but they're both equally important. So I'll pause there for any questions on that. But again, recertifications is something that Section Eight uh requires, just like in public housing. And we will follow up if uh we did not receive the complete uh recertification package from you.
Great. Thank you so much, Robert. Appreciate it.
Sure.
So I'm going to turn it over to live questions. Um, what I'll do is um call um the name or number that I'm seeing, and um I'll, I'll ask you to unmute your microphone. Um, please ask your question. Um, one, um, one point is that if you do have a question that pertains to your individual apartment, we do try not to share in a public forum like this, um personal information. So if there is a personal question, we encourage you to ask it in the chat, uh the typed chat or, uh and we can answer you directly. Or you're absolutely encouraged to come to the property management office during business hours or give us a call so we can help you with any issue that you might be experiencing. And with that, I'd like to start off with Calvin James. Calvin, you should be able to unmute your mic. Calvin, can you hear me? Give it another second. Calvin, can you hear me? You should be able to speak. We should be able to hear you. Okay, I'm not sure, Calvin, if you're having problems with your mic, um but I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna circle back to you and move on to another question. Uh, let's go to um the number ending in four two zero eight. You should be able to unmute and ask your question. Hi.
So hello, um, my name is Tawanda Lewis. I wanted to talk about the resident's quality of life. Ever since this been going on, I feel like they taking advantage of our quality of life. Nobody cares about um what's going on with the resident, and they told us, oh, we're gonna get hospitality suites. We haven't got none of that.
There's no transparency.
There's no transparency.
You know, no, like every, a lot of stuff that was on that flyer. Somebody explain it to me, because we didn't see it. When was the OSHA class? What, what, what opportunities that they gave? And we do need to talk to the people who got renovated, they, in the beginning. We need to know how they're doing, so we know what we need to expect, because it's a lot of complaints going on. And I don't know if I want that renovation if the people are not happy with the renovation.
Sure. Thank you so much. I'm gonna place uh the mic on mute and answer that question. So what we're, what we've heard is um a question about resident quality of life, about access to hospitality suites uh and just general information sharing and transparency. So that's, that's a big list, but I'll, I'll do my best to answer all of those. So first of all, with respect to general quality of life, I want to make no two ways about it. This is certainly a very large construction project. There are seven, almost seven hundred apartments at Harlem River. We are doing, uh, we talk every day about how we can minimize disruptions for residents, but uh renovating six, it's six hundred and ninety-three apartments. Uh, we talk every day about how we can minimize disruptions for residents, but renovating six, it's six hundred ninety-three apartments plus. All of the common areas, all of the grounds, the hallways, building laundry rooms. It's a, it's a complicated and messy process. Absolutely. It is a construction site in no, in every way, shape and form. So I want to start by acknowledging that that is an uncomfortable context. That is, I just, I want to agree. That is an uncomfortable context. Now, what can we do about it? Now, first of all, with respect to the actual renovation in your apartment, as we covered during this meeting. We are doing temporary moves from your current apartment to a temporary apartment that is onsite. The temporary apartment is fully renovated. The moving process is fully paid for. The residents should not be carrying any of those costs from. Packing materials to the actual move itself. And also we provide a cash stipend to help you cover any miscellaneous expenses you might have. For example, lunch during moving day. In addition to that, if there are any particular nuisances that you're concerned about, we really encourage you to contact property management. It's typically the case that we're aware of it and working on it, but in no way, shape or form does that mean we want you to be quiet about it. We'd love to hear from you. Tell us what you're experiencing and as well as give us ideas on how we might be able to address it. In terms of transparency of information, so we're trying to address this in two ways. The first way is what we're, we've started to resume once every six weeks. We are sending and doing a newsletter that's going out to every single apartment. It's translated into Spanish and there are copies of it in Mandarin. In the property management office. The newsletter, once every six weeks, will tell you a few things if you haven't seen it already. The first is what work has been completed recently. And second, what work is ongoing? And third, what work is upcoming? So generally, a big update on construction work. It will also provide you with property management updates, try to answer questions about income recertifications, HQS inspections. As well as give a sense of what the schedule is for the next round of temporary moves. So again, once every six weeks, you will receive a printed copy of our newsletter at your home. For you to review and follow up with us with questions. And then lastly, well, really not lastly, second, another thing we're doing for transparency. Again, to try to address the fact that this is a very complicated process that creates a lot of questions. We are holding, we're gonna go back to holding regular ones of these town hall meetings. So we're now doing these once a quarter. So this one and then the next one, Elliot, I believe will be in.
July.
Be in July. And exactly as you, I hope you experienced with this one, we print out, we develop this slideshow, which has, has basically all of the information. We translate it into multiple languages. We drop off a copy at every single apartment and we also record the meeting and put it on our website. So that's the newsletter, the town hall meeting. And then the last is, we have an open property management office. So you know, I know that these are, there are many complicated issues that families are facing. Whether it's just in their own lives or also with construction, but if there is something that we can do in our property management office, please come meet with us. We also have a dedicated social service team that can provide access to resources and referrals. I don't want to say we can solve every problem, but we will certainly do our best. And we will certainly, it will continue to be an open door to try to hear and respond to residents' concerns.
And Sam, one part of them was about OSHA training.
And. Oh yes, I'm sorry. Yes, yes.
And you can talk to the OSHA training that, that was had by Harlem River, but there's ongoing. OSHA training throughout the community and we'll make sure that it's posted wherever it needs to be posted. For Harlem River residents, there's an OSHA training class coming up next week. It's short notice, but we'll get that information now. The Manhattan. Employment Opportunity Program at the State Office Building does it periodically. They have one coming up between the. The is May, I'm May eighth to the eleventh and it's online. But I'll get that information now and as that schedule come out, we will make sure that Harlem River has it.
Right, and we do multiple, we do OSHA trainings on an ongoing basis. Unfortunately, the hiring manager in charge of this, Judy, was not able to attend this meeting tonight. But I can certainly pass along that residents are interested in hearing, continuing to hear about OSHA trainings that are available. And make sure we get that word out. I know there's no, there's no, there's never too much communication that we can do and we can certainly send out notices, make phone calls. And make sure y'all are aware of the trainings that are upcoming. I want to take a second to see if there are any questions on the Spanish language line. Lady, are there any questions on the Spanish line?
There are no questions in the Spanish language line.
Thank you, lady. And Yui on the Mandarin line?
No question from the Mandarin line either.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so let's go back to the raised hands. Let's hear from the number ending in eight four three five. You should be able to unmute your mic.
Hello, how are you this evening?
I'm great. Thank you for asking. How are you?
All right, um, you know, I have just maybe two questions. I don't want to, you know, be long-winded, but they're important questions. Like, you know, I'm excited about, you know, the move and everything because my apartment definitely needs to be renovated. I, I personally, and I don't want you to take this the wrong, the wrong way. All due respect to you, sir. I should have been one of the first on the list. I have lead, I have mold, I have a slop sink. I mean, come on, and I've been dealing with this ever since the renovation started. No one has attempted to try to do anything to help me. Okay, but my first question is, I have like a big bed. Is there one of the movers that's gonna help me? To, to unscrew it, to let it down, to take it to the temporary apartment so I have something to sleep on?
That's a great question. Thank you for asking that. And I'm not gonna, you mentioned that you had two questions, so I'm gonna leave your mic unmuted. So you're able to ask the second one, but let me answer this one first. It's a great question. So the answer to your question is absolutely. Not only will they help you, but you actually don't need to do anything. You can just, you can be supervising them, the movers, if you'd like. But you will not need to do any of the work to move anything if you're, if you have a bed frame that needs to be disassembled. The moving company will disassemble it for you and then will reassemble it in your temporary apartment. And then the same thing when you come back. They will disassemble it from your temporary apartment, reassemble it when you get back. So there's, there's nothing that you need to do. In terms of actually moving any of your items, the movers will do all of that for you with you being there to supervise and to direct.
Well, great. Thank you. That was my first question. The second question was, um. Will they remove the mold and lead that's in the apartment?
So these are, this is another great question. So the answer to your, to that question is definitely yes. So first of all, if you have any existing issues in your apartment that need attention, we, I really encourage you to contact the property management team. The best way to get immediate concerns such as mold, mold is a huge problem. If you have any mold and if you.
Know many times, sir. I've let them know and nothing was done about it.
So this is what I would ask. We have an email address for concerns. I'd ask that you send an email to that email just, just so I can make sure that I follow up on it directly. Sure, it's Harlem River. Yep, Harlem River at C C managers dot com. And I, and I want you to, if you can, in your email, please let us know. I don't want to have you say it out loud because it's your personal apartment. But please let us know your name, the best number to reach you, so we can schedule this work for you, as well as your address. That would be wonderful. And I want to also, and I want to answer your question in general as well. So you asked, are we, are we dealing with lead and mold? The answer is definitely yes. So the way that this process works is before the renovation in your apartment begins. We do a lead-based paint test. This happens in every single apartment. The, the test is completed by a certified lead-based paint tester. And the results of the test basically inform the lead-based paint work that we do. Any, we test every, we test all of the surfaces in your apartment for lead paint. And any surface that comes up positive for lead paint, we remove the lead paint. And I want to add, we're not only doing that in every apartment, we're also doing that in all of the common spaces and all of the exterior spaces. Because believe it or not, you know, the, the, these, well, you do know, the buildings are almost a hundred years old. And not only was at some point in the past, lead paint used on the apartments. There are also areas in the, in the common areas and exteriors that we are also removing all of that lead paint. So yes, we are definitely taking, we are, we are definitely going to be removing that as part of the renovation in your, in your unit. When you move back, there will be no more lead in your apartment.
So, um, to add to that, that does not, that's not gonna change my moving date, is it? I'll still be able to renovate to a temporary apartment, correct?
Correct. So that's exactly correct. Yes, the, the, the schedule. The six-week move schedule includes all of the time that we need to do all of that work.
What is your name? Thank you. What is your name?
Of course, my name is Sam Bernbaum.
And you are the.
I work with Harlem River Preservation.
Right, and your title is?
My title is Senior Project Manager. So I'm gonna, ma'am, thank you so much for these questions and please do reach out to our email line. I am going to put your mic back on mute so we can move on to the next question, but thank you so much. Okay, so I'd like to move on to. Sorry, jumping around here, the, the phone number ending in seven, seven, eight, two. You should be able to unmute. Seven, seven, eight, two.
Um, excuse me, there's a hand raised in the Spanish line. If someone can unmute them.
Great, lady. Let's just, let's just take, take this question first and then, and then move over to the Spanish line. Seven, seven, eight, two. Are you able to hear me?
What's the number?
I'm, I'm sorry. Can you hear me? Seven, seven, eight, two. Yep, I, yeah, I can hear you. Three, four, seven, three, five, three, seven, seven, eight, two.
Yeah, how you doing?
Hi, how are you? Yes, we can hear you.
My name is Jacqueline Berry. How you doing? Um, I have some situations that you say about the reservation and everything. And, um, I want to find out, do we gotta move out our apartment? We gotta do the windows or the cooling system?
That's a great question. So I'm gonna ask John and Elliot to handle, to answer that question. So just to say out loud, Elliot, the question was, will residents need to move out of their apartment? Again, if for the, for the heating and cooling systems to be installed. So Elliot, if you don't mind answering that with John.
Sure, um. So maybe could you clarify, has your apartment already been renovated or not yet? Are you able to, I can explain the, the process for both, but are you able to unmute?
Could be able to. What, Elliot, why don't you, if you don't mind explaining, just because there might be other folks where it applies both ways. So if you are able to explain.
Sure, so, so for the, since about February of this year and going forward, as John explained earlier. The, the new heating and cooling system has been. Put in as part of the renovation work. So it's done at the same time while you are temporarily relocated for those six weeks. As part of the, the overall renovation work. If your apartment was renovated prior to that, it was not done during the relocation period. Because we did not have all of the equipment at that time, so we're gonna, going to be going back to installing the, those systems for those units. Starting in June and you will be contacted directly about a time when that work will happen. And we'll make sure to coordinate that with you. You will not need to relocate. You will not need to move out of your apartment. If you don't want to be there while the work is going on, it will, it will take a few days for that work to happen. If you don't, you can be in your apartment, but if you prefer to be elsewhere. We'll provide a hospitality area will be provided with, you know, seating and snacks and access to a kitchen and bathroom. Did that answer the question sufficiently?
Yeah. And seven, seven, eight to the, I'm sorry, ma'am, you, you should be able to unmute if you have any follow-ups, but just the, just to summarize and answer your question directly. No, you will not need to move again it for this work to occur. If your unit has already been renovated, except for the heating and cooling equipment and the windows, we will come back. And we will do that work on a schedule that works for you and you are welcome to be in your apartment when that happens. Or if you'd like to be in a hospitality unit during the day, that is also fine. We'll, we'll help you coordinate the details, tell you where it is. They're, they're located at the property. If your unit has not been renovated yet. We are now starting to do this heating and cooling and window installation as part of the renovation work, so it won't be a separate process. Okay, so Lady, you mentioned that there was a question on the chat, the Spanish line chat. Are you able to, was that question expressed to you or is it? Do you have the number? Lady, can you hear me?
I think it's Jose who is doing the Spanish interpretation now.
Jose, can you?
I can hear you. Can you unmute the speaker in the Spanish line?
So the Spanish lines are controlled by, by your, on your end. You, you all should be able to do the unmeeting. I'm only, we're only seeing the English side.
Okay, one second, because I tried to read it and I could not.
Or if it's possible, Jose, if you can hear the question, you could also repeat it back to us.
I, I can't hear the question. I just, I was just horrified there was a raised hand.
Yeah, if, do you know what the number is? Maybe I, it is on the, the English side. Are you able to tell me the number, Jose? Sorry, folks.
The number ends in eight, seven, one, nine.
Okay, yeah, so that's on your end. That's, you know, that's the, the, that number, I, I'm not able to see that number. It's only on the Spanish, Spanish. Line, so I don't know if you and Lady can maybe put your heads together to try to figure that one out. If you can, just speak up and I'll definitely want to hear that question. In the interim, let's go back to raised hands. So let's go with the number ending in, sorry, I think probably did, I already did some of these. Let's go with Kay. Kay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi Kay, how are you doing?
I'm great. Okay, my mom is, is in one of the units and she's of, of, you know, of age. I don't want to say her age, but she's of age. She's, she's, she's great. She's, she's aging gracefully. So with that said, I of course want her to be in the best of accommodations. So the concern right now is the AC for this summer. And I'm not trying to be long-winded, but I, because I, the questions I have probably a couple of people are very interesting, so please forgive me. But the AC is a concern because last year, we had a regular AC in there, could not use it. The electricity source was not up to code or up to the standards for the AC, so it wouldn't come on. So I'm wondering if we're gonna have that same problem because the other issue is between the bathroom and the, one of the bedrooms. And I want to say the hall, those three are on the same line and that line is causing the.
I'm sorry, Kay. Okay, it sounds like you just got cut off. Yeah, I can hear you.
So the question is, what's gonna happen as far as like, say, they want to put a unit in there because even if they put a windowless unit, it's not gonna work. You know, but same because of the electricity source.
So. Let, I'm gonna try to answer your question. I'm gonna leave your mic unmuted, Kay, just so if I don't answer, if I'm misunderstanding your question with my answer, please let me know. So I can try to answer it in a better way. So it sounds.
You're gonna give me back the, the, the mic when you finish. It's okay, I'll be quiet. No, no worries.
So, so the way I'm understanding your question is, number one, you're concerned about, first of all. Until even before the new heating and cooling system is in, you want to make sure that, of course, you're able to air condition the apartment before any of the renovations are even taking place. Which makes perfect sense. So first of all.
We've already had renovations. We've had the first, first part of renovations. And then this is what I'm saying, the new electric seems to me to be worse than the old. That's what I'm trying to tell you. That's number one. And number two, what will we do? Because we won't be able to plug if we were to purchase. That's number one. And number two, what will we do? Because we won't be able to plug. If we were to purchase one, we won't be able to plug it in.
So a couple of things. First of all, so yeah, thank you for clarifying. I appreciate that. So first of all, if when we are gonna be scheduling, okay, we are going to be scheduling the work, first of all, to replace the heating and cooling system. So you won't actually, once we come in and do, put in the new equipment, you're actually not gonna need a window A C unit. It will be actually installed in, it's, it's gonna, it's basically gonna be like central air conditioning. So once that renovation takes place, you won't need your window A C in it. You can keep it, but you're not gonna need to use it, because there will be, if you're in the low-rise buildings, there will be a vent in each of the rooms that allows conditioned air to blow into your apartment in every room, as well as a central thermostat that you can control. Before that happens, so I don't know the schedule for your particular, you know, I don't, you haven't shared where.
It's the B building, so that.
So before that happens, if you, if you, if you think, if you've experienced any issues with your electric that has, that you're electrical, which has led you to think that there's gonna be a problem when you, if you still need to use your window A C unit for this summer, please let us know, and we will come by and do an assessment.
Okay, number one, we didn't, we never, we never got to use the A C. Um, so we, 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 we're trying to figure out what to do this summer, because we know we on, it's only one more summer. So what I'm saying to you, because you're sounding like the fall is when this is gonna take place.
So uh um, John, um, would you please um weigh in and do we, do we have as of right now, a rough timeframe to finish the comeback work to read, to do the heating and cooling? John Capone?
Uh, it's all somewhat dependent on the arrival of certain pieces of equipment. Okay, so Kay, I don't want to go out on a limb and say, yes, we do. I mean theoretically, I have a, we have a schedule, but I don't want to, I don't want to tell Kay that, oh, yes, don't worry, we're gonna have it, but and then the condenser doesn't show up and then she's, you understand?
Right, so, so Kay, we're oper, so as of right now, what we're saying is, let's operate under the assumption that there will be, this coming summer, you'll still use your window A C units. And with that, please, please contact our office management and let them know that you brought this concern up during the town hall meeting, that you're concerned that there might be a problem with your electrical. It needs to be evaluated so that your mother can have air conditioning in her unit. So please call our office. We're open eight thirty to five um for walk-ins and phone calls, and I can tell you the number. Um, it is six, four, six, four, six, one, three, zero, zero, seven.
Who's the go-to person after this issue?
Like, like, likely the person that will pick up the, so press up, when you dial that number, you'll hear, hear on menu of options. Press option one, which is for maintenance. And likely the person that will pick up the phone, we have a, a team of people, but likely the person that will pick up the phone is Tia. So just let Tia know that you live in a unit that was already renovated. You have concerns about maybe an issue with the electrical and you need someone to come and evaluate it for you.
Okay, now, as, as well as that, um, I'm, I'm wondering about the, what do you call it, the, the hallways? Because um I see you guys didn't do that yet.
When you say the hallways, do you mean?
They weren't re- rehabbed. And I'm not sure what's up on those walls, and I was just concerned, was that gonna get done before the fall?
Correct, that's a great question. So John, um, right back to you, do we have?
I want you to get some rest.
So, so Kay, and actually, you know, before you respond down, I just want to lay out for everyone what the actual plan is. Um, not timing, but the actual construct, what is the work itself that will occur in these hallways? So excuse me, so we are going to be renovating all the hallways. There is a difference between what we're going to be doing at the low-rise buildings and the high-rise buildings. I'm sure everyone is sick of us saying this, but the answer is landmarks. Landmarks prevents us from.
I know about the landmarks. I know all about them, so you don't have to waste your mo, your breath with that, because you're, you're doing a great job, but I know all about that, so.
Yeah, so in the low-rise buildings, what we need, what we'll be doing is, we're gonna, for all of the yellow, yellow glazed block on the walls, we'll be clean, basically, clean, deep cleaning all of that. For the floors, we're gonna be repairing any cracks and unevenness in the floors, so the floors will be level. They'll also be polished. For the stairs, there are some staircases that have damage, as I'm sure you've seen. The staircases are all going to be um repaired. The paint is gonna be scraped off and they'll be repainted. The doors, the, the front doors of each apartment are going to be repainted. Um, there's gonna be new door knockers on each door.
Cannot hear the bells at all.
Right, and then the front door of the actual stair hall, the building itself, will also be replaced. So John, can you jump in and do we, are we able to provide any kind of indication of the schedule of the common area, or even if it's started?
The common area work is actually starting on Monday. Um, and uh we could uh maybe in the next newsletter, or we could uh, we could put more specific dates to uh, you know, we want to see how it progresses in the first one or two stair halls. But uh the painters are starting on Monday and the flooring will be a few weeks behind them, because naturally you don't want to do fluids only to spill fresh paint on them.
So, it's okay, what's, so John is saying, I'm sorry, John, you said Monday, right?
Monday, yep.
So, so Kay, starting on Monday, we will be starting on the common areas. Now, I, I don't want to give the expectation that we're gonna get all of them done at the same time, because again, there are forty-eight addresses, individual addresses.
It's not like it's just the floors or just the walls. You, I, I get, I get it. I just want to prepare them for what's in store, because I had a rehab done. It wasn't pretty. So I had mine done four years ago. So I, I, I know what you guys are going through. It's really, uh, these poor people don't understand. It's just as, it's just as bad on you guys as it is on, on them, you know what I mean? I, I already know that, but what?
I will tell you, Kay, I'm not the one who has to live in a construction site, so it's nice of you to say, but I as, as the person that's just in the details and doesn't actually live there, I'm gonna go ahead and disagree with you on that one, because I, it's, it's disruptive. I mean, it's construction.
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying. I'm not saying that, because I, I, they're building a park by me, they're building an eight million dollar park by me. So I know what that is like. That's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying you guys want to get in and out. Y'all don't want to be there bothering people, so that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying that it's not bad on the tenants. I totally understand. Like I said, I just went to one. It wasn't pretty, so I just wanted to make that clear. One more question. I'm a, I'm an e-bike rider and I've been on the property and locked my bike up. I don't want to get a tow. Where's the safest place? Can I park it on the sidewalk when I come? What, you know, I don't want to park it on the sidewalk and you guys are towing and talking about that's your property too. I don't know, you know, where the, where the property line ends and, and begins, so I need to understand that, so I don't cause any problems.
The great question. So Kay, I'm gonna place your mic on mute, because we're gonna take another question app, one more question after this, and Adam Kroom. Um, this is a good question. For folks that yeah, for, for folks that do use bikes that want to store them properly, do we have any, are, are there, are, I don't believe that there are, but currently bike racks on the site. Um, but is there a place that you could suggest that they can put them?
Well, that's what me and Nasa was talking about before. We, we were talking about it among ourselves and we, and we were going to bring it back internally to see if we can um find out some way to begin um install some bike racks, because it is a big problem. You know, it's a big situation. Um, at the current time right now, I don't have a solution for her right now, but I'll get back to it. It's on the table. We just talked about this yesterday, so I'll get back to you.
Okay. Okay, so Kay, I, I did mute your mic, so I want to take one more question, but just to, to summarize Adam's response, we don't currently have bike racks on site. But it is some, certainly something that I'm glad that you brought this up. Um, so it's certainly something that we'll talk about, and if we're able to include that as part of the renovation, we will include that detail in a future version of our um, of our newsletter. Um, I want to move to one last question before we wrap up for the evening. Um, can we go to um uh, the question, the um oh, I'm sorry, Jose, it looks like, were you able to get that question from the Spanish line?
Yes, the question was, is it for those uh residents that requested a relocation um from their apartment, um, how long will it take for their um relocation from their current apartment before they're given a new apartment?
So when you, when you say relocation, do you mean as part of the renovation, or someone who wants to live, uh has placed a transfer request?
So, the, the, the way they asked the question um was uh um relocation, but let's, we're going to verify their question. Give us one moment.
Okay, I can answer this in, in both ways. Um, so if, if they're talking about the relocation, the process works as follows. When we're, we let, we inform each apartment sixty days before their temporary move to a different apartment within the property. Um, so sixty days in advance is when you, we let you know um about the location of your move and, and the date. And then in those sixty days, we will, our temporary move team will work with you to um help you with getting moving boxes and packing materials and also help packing if you need help with that. Um, and providing you with information and also discussing with you any accommodations that you might need. Um, for transfers, so there's, I'll answer this in two ways. So first of all, and I saw a question about this in the chat. Um, Robert, can you talk about the portable voucher on the anniversary of the closing?
Sure, so, yeah, yeah, hi, how you doing, Sam? So yes, uh, so basically, um, the policy is that uh you have to be on the Section A program for at least one year, right, twelve months. And then afterwards, uh, you can request a uh a transfer. Now, that transfer can be uh within the five boroughs, or it could be outside of New York City, which is a portability option. Since this is a federally funded program, uh, housing authorities across the country uh administer a Section A program, so we have portability uh transfers pretty much uh on a monthly basis. As a matter of fact, right now, NYCHA is paying uh tenants to reside in Section A departments outside of New York City, something like fifteen hundred of them. So it's a good option for you to take if you're interested. Uh, but you do have to apply for the transfer on the NYCHA portal and be found eligible. So uh if you're interested, uh, we encourage it if it's after one year.
So, so Jose, that, to answer those questions, the first is, if the question is about a temporary move, sixty days in advance is when they'll find out. If they want to move outside of the property, um, they do have a portable voucher available to them um with just under NYCHA rules, um, so they should go onto the, the, into the NYCHA uh, NYCHA portal S, into the NYCHA portal and, and go through that process. And Robert, do you, if they need any support with that, do you know the phone number off the top of your head?
Oh, yes, that's the, the customer contact center. That's the uh seven, one, eight, uh, seven, oh, seven, 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 one number. Um, you call that number. Yeah, seven, one, eight, seven, oh, seven, 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 one.
Okay, and that's if they need, if they need support axings accessing their portable voucher, that is a lot, that is a phone number for NYCHA. I just, I'm sorry, I, I see a couple of quick questions in this chat. I, I would be super quick. I just want to answer them, because I think they're relevant for everyone, and then we're gonna wrap. One question is from Washington. Um, it says, is the plan to put families in the right size apartment? It's three of us currently in a one-bedroom. So what I believe this individual is talking about is right sizing. So essentially, there will not be right sizing as during the renovation process, so that involves having based on your household size, being in the right size apartment. After the renovation is completely done, then we will start the right sizing process. Um, and it will be based on availability. So if an apart, once apartments of the right size become available for your family, yes, we will complete that process, but it is not going to happen quickly. Um, we, we, it's gonna be a process to do that. And then the last question um was about apartment sizes, so um this resident asked about um an apartment, their apartment after the renovation is smaller, that they said that they're taking away space from a closet. So um, there are, if you take a look at the, the temporary move agreement, um, as well as the, the temporary move package that we provided to you, um, we dropped it off at every apartment. If you need, if you uh need this, add an extra copy, please visit our property management office or the temporary move office. There may be small changes in the size of your apartments as part of the renovation. We avoid it in every case possible, because we know, we want to give you not something less, but something better with this renovation. But as a result of this complete modernization of your apartment from electric heating and cooling, brand-new cabinets, brand-new flooring, um, removing all the lead-based paint, brand-new windows, there are at times very small changes we need to make, whether it's installing a particular piece of equipment in your closet or making some other small changes. We do our absolute best to communicate this issue upfront to you. If that is something that is, that may happen in your apartment. Um, if you have particular concerns about that, we, I encourage you to, to bring it up with the temporary move team during your intake interview. But at all times, we try our absolute best to avoid this. It is just a problem of doing a major modern renovate, renovation in a property that's a hundred years old, and there are just certain physical limitations. So with that, I'm sorry I rushed a little bit at the end. I didn't get to every question, but please visit our property management office if you have more. Um, and I'd like to turn it over just to, for a little send-off over to Donald Notice, and thank you so much, everyone. Really appreciate the time.
Sam, before I close out, can, are there any questions related to twenty-eight fifty that you can answer one of them? Because I think as they are, there was a complaint that there's no questions answered for twenty-eight fifty. Do you, can you see any related directly to them?
So I don't, I don't see any questions for twenty-eight fifty, but I can say just a quick note on the, the renovations for twenty-eight fifty. Um, we now have, uh, we've scheduled, I don't remember if we've started off the top of my head, but at least scheduled the first floor of twenty-eight fifty to be renovated. Um, the second floor will follow, of course. Um, and we've done almost a hundred percent of all of the window replacements at twenty-eight fifty. Um, we will also be doing all of the common areas, all of the hallways. We'll be doing a complete overclad of the building, so it'll look completely different. We'll have a new facade on it, which is possible, because it is not a landmarked building. Um, and we'll be installing a playground um right next door to the pro, the tower, um, which Elliot shared previously in this uh, in this presentation. If you have any, and then it will, of course, also get all of the, the new kitchens, new bathrooms, um, you know, electric heating and cooling. All of those renovations are also going to twenty-eight fifty. We, we totally get that everyone wants to go, go first. Um, and there is a, there is a sequence to this. Um, we, rest assured, we're working as quickly and as safely as we can um to make sure that, that we get these, these renovations in there. Um, we really appreciate the patience. I know it's not, it's easy for me to say that, because I'm not living through it. Um, but we, we, rest assured, we really are working as quickly as we can while being uh, being as safe as we can be.
Okay, thanks, Sam. And, and I'm gonna be brief. I know we went over a little bit and so that John can get some rest. I'm, I'm gonna be real brief, but I want to thank the whole development team for putting this town hall together. I mean, we've been working on this project for maybe the last two and a half years. We closed a year ago, and it's an ongoing process. We have you know, over two hundred and fifty apartments completed. We're, you know, probably gonna be finished by the fall of twenty-four, so we have a lot more time together to get this right, to make it comfortable for you, and we're gonna continue that. I think as Sam mentioned about the um transparency and rescheduling this town hall so that we can answer questions and get everything on the table to make it as comfortable and as, as um quickly as possible that we can get through this process. So I want to thank the residents of of um Harlem River for the always the great questions that you guys have, that you, you know, hold us accountable. And we will continue to have these meetings and make this process as smooth as poss, as possible. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thanks so much, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.